Administration will update the Board on the development of the district's 2018-19 budget. This item provides an opportunity for the Board's information and discussion.
Good evening, President Logan, Vice President Rhodey, Superintendent Thompson, members of the Board. Tonight, we're going to give you a first look at the budget we're putting together for fiscal year 19. I will tell you, with the budget forms just being released on the 18th of July, these numbers are our draft form. So, they potentially may be tweaked in the next week before we meet again. But this should give you a pretty good idea of where we're heading overall in this year's budget. So, if we want to start by looking at the mill levy, one of the responsibilities that the Board has is to set the mill levy for the district. And I thought we'd start there tonight by looking at where we're estimating the mill levy may fall for fiscal year 19 for the district. So, the general fund is pretty static at the 20 mils. That's set in statute, so we don't have a lot of control on that piece. If you look at the supplemental general, which is the second line, let's start the slide, how about we do that? If we look at the second line down on the LOB, our 2016-17 actual was 16.844 mils. Our actual for 2017-18 came in at 17.553 mils. And our estimate for 1819 is 16.618 mils. The reason for this decrease is the new finance formula that the legislature passed in this past fiscal session added $35 million to state aid for supplemental general fund. And we received $4.4 million of that state aid, which reduced our property tax piece of the LOB. So, we were able to offset our property tax by that increase in state aid, therefore able to bring that piece down just a little bit. Capital outlay, our statutory max is eight, and we are there. Bond and interest, we're recommending we come up just a little bit, and we'll talk about that. Special liability tweaking just a bit. But our total mill levy, overall, we're recommending a decrease of .118 mils. So, the mill levy would go down. Our goal has been, our approach with the mill levy is to try to keep it as even as we possibly can, so we don't have big spikes up and down. And the action we took last year with the supplemental general was good evidence of that. A lot of our neighboring districts, because of the flaw, I guess you'd call it a flaw, in last year's formula where supplemental general aid was based on general fund in the previous year, to capture your full supplemental general authority, you had to increase your mill levy and increase your property taxes to capture your full legal max. We chose to use some of our contingency reserve instead of increase the mill rate. This year, they've fixed the flaw, so we were able to capture that additional revenue without a big swing in the property tax. So, we've stayed relatively even, where kind of our surrounding districts have just moved a little bit more up and down. So, but that's just been, you know, our approach is, our preference is to try to keep it as even as we possibly can. We're recommending bond and interest come up just a little bit, because we're kind of looking out ahead in fiscal year 20 and beyond. Our bond payments start to go up, we're sitting, this year's a little bit different, because we're paying, we're going to call that one bond issue early. But right now, we're sitting between 38 and 40 million dollars of bond payments. We start to creep up, 42, 44, 46. So, right now, we feel is a good time to go ahead and just creep that up just a little bit. Interest rates, as far as our pooled cash, are very strong. It's a good opportunity for us to get that, and yet, we stay relatively flat on the mill levy. And then, special liability, same kind of concept, where we can capture what we think we're going to owe related to that obligation, and then eliminate that mill hopefully in another year or two, depending on how much we're able to capture and what our long-term obligation looks like for special liability. So, I think that's good news. If the Board, at the end, if we want to have some discussion, if that's an acceptable approach, we can do that. But that's kind of the logic behind the proposal. Before we start looking at some of the numbers by fund, I just wanted to take the opportunity to explain just a little bit of terminology. The final adopted budget is the maximum budget approved by the BOE as adjusted by KSTE for our actual student counts. So, when we build a budget, we estimate our enrollment, because the official count date is not until 9/20. So, we do the best job we can to estimate how many CTE students we think we're going to have, how many hours enrolled, and how many bilingual students. Even though our base enrollment is based on either the prior year or the second prior year, the weightings are current year. So, we're estimating those. Last year, we did that same thing in about October, November. KSTE comes in and audits our numbers to see how close we were. And if we are too high, they adjust us down. If we are a little bit low, they do adjust us up to the actual number. But that typically is not, that doesn't happen too often. Usually, we're a little high, and they're estimating, or correcting us down. So, our published budget last year that you passed upon hearing was $351 million. The adjusted legal max for last year ended up being $347 million. And that was primarily audit adjustments. So, the, what we're, as we're planning the fiscal year 19 budget, what we're setting is maximum budget authority. In those, in our estimates, that's the max we're going to be able to spend. We won't be able to drive really additional revenues unless the counts come in, and then most likely, if they were, we were really off, we'd have to come in with a republished budget of some sort. We can come down, we can't really go over without republishing. So, as, what I'm looking at tonight is budget to budget, last year's budget to next year's budget. Knowing that in the general fund and the supplemental general fund, that final legal max was money expended, so those two numbers are essentially the same as actuals. And we'll kind of walk through that here in a minute. And then, again, actual expenditures, which I'm not really looking at yet tonight, and then our budgeted expenditures, which are planned, money is going out. So, again, it kind of depends what we're talking about. There's budget to budget, actuals to budget. You see that a lot in the budget book, where you have your actuals, and then you have these big swings in the actual budget authority and for next year. Some of that is because we know that our counts are estimates, and they potentially come down just a little bit upon audit. But tonight, we're looking at budget to budget. So, right now, for fiscal year 18, our final adopted budget, as we stated previously, was $347 million and change. And we're estimating fiscal year 19, based on estimates for enrollment, to be $364 million and change. The supplemental general, last year, 114 million and change. And we're estimating 116 million new budget authority in fiscal year 19 for a new funding estimate of a little over $18 million. The general fund excludes some reimbursement dollars that we get. It's not part of the legal max calculation, so I left those off in case anyone was looking at our final legal max letter. The weighted funds all receive transfers from the general fund. So, all of the dollars that those weightings drive actually go to the general fund first and then get transferred to their appropriate fund. At a minimum, we always transfer the aid that those pieces generate. In almost all of these funds, we end up transferring more, because the expenditures in those funds, it costs us more to provide services. But here is where we're kind of estimating the budgets to land related to the weighted funds. Bilingual, bilingual will go up a little bit. Career and tech ed, we're going to go up some. Virtual, actually, we're estimating a slight decrease here. We're just trying to get a little closer to, on our estimates. We've been just a little bit off there. At-risk, you'll see a fairly significant swing. We continue to make progress on making sure that if we are spending dollars on at-risk students, that we are capturing it in the right place. For several years in the budget, there just wasn't a lot of focus on it, so we, it's not that we weren't doing it, but we weren't doing it with fidelity, I guess, for lack of a better term. Now, because we know there's a lot of scrutiny, and there is an audit coming up in another year, so we're really focused on, if we're spending dollars out of at-risk, are they truly on at-risk programs? Are, if we have teachers in buildings that have high free and reduced lunch, are we split funding that teacher to accurately reflect the true expenditures going on in that building? So, we're just making a lot more effort to make sure that we're capturing dollars in the right buckets and really telling our story. Four-year-old at-risk, we've talked about that, that we are increasing some expenditures in that area, opening some new classrooms. And then, special education, you'll see some movement on special ed. Now, there are other funds that aren't weighted specifically. I wanted to talk specifically about a couple of them. Capital outlay, you'll see a nice increase in the last year's budget to this year's budget. I was probably a little bit tight related to capital outlay, because, again, being newer, I tend to be a little bit cautious. I want to make sure this year, I have enough budget authority built into capital, not only for our planned expenditures, but also for a little bit more of what might come up. I think I was just a little bit conservative last year, and I want to make sure that we have some maneuverability if building repairs are happening. And I want to make sure that we're making progress on some of that deferred maintenance work. So, that's part of the reason why you see some additional dollars going in in that area. Nutrition services, small increase there. Professional development is down. Last year, we used some year-end cash to support professional development. This year, didn't have to do that as much, primarily because Title III has come in with some additional, or Title II, I'm sorry, have come in with some additional dollars. Title IV, that's going to transfer into Title II, so I don't have to use some years, didn't have to use some year-end transfer money into professional development. So, that's why you see in the PD fund, it's actually down, but we will capture some expenditures in Title II. And I don't have federal funds listed here tonight, we're not quite finished with those. Latchkey, a little bit of bump up. Parents as teachers, relatively flat. Summer school, relatively flat. Special liability, again, relatively, a little bit of increase, not too much. Virtual, again, we've adjusted based on what we think is closer to actual. And capers. I'm going to talk a little bit about capers tonight. You'll see a fairly significant increase in our adopted budget for capers. And if some of you may recall how the capers works, as far as the employer contribution piece, is the state actually sends us capers money, and then 30 seconds later, we wire it back. And they count that as contributions to what they provide for funding for schools. The increase this year is a combination of factors. The employer rate has gone up from 12.01% to 13.21%. But the 2018 legislature also passed some makeup payments to capers. In fact, I think if it holds true, and I brought the other computer, because I had it pulled up, the overall state contribution to makeup capers, if I can get my login right. So, $82 million is what they're trying to make up for fiscal 19 system-wide. So, what the state did in the state budget forms is they applied a factor to the formulas, so that all districts, we budgeted 27% more for capers coming in and out of our budget. So, you're going to see a huge swing here related to that makeup payment, because we'll have our piece of it that comes to us and goes right back out. And then, certainly, for any new positions, wage increases, there's a factor there that we have to add in. So, that's a big chunk of budgetary increase that doesn't get used in any other place other than capers flow-through. And then, bond and interest is up. This is related to the earlier action we took to decide that we wanted to call the 2009-A series that is callable as of October 1st of 2018. This increase reflects the ability for us to pay off that bond. So, really rough, really rough numbers. The additional general supplemental funds, weighted funds, net of transfers, we're looking at an increase in budget authority of about 18.3. So, that's the 18 million of new money, and then some year-end cash that we were able to budget within some of those funds. And like I said, that number will tweak a little bit. All other funds, that includes the capers, bond and interest, additional capital outlay authority, is 25 million. So, our budget right now, just for the listed funds we've talked about tonight, will increase $43 million. But a big chunk of that is not necessarily operationally related. The 18.3 is really where the bulk of our operations live. The 25 million has a big chunk of capers and a big chunk of bond and interest. And then, I didn't, haven't done anything here with textbooks or any of the unbudgeted funds. So, this is really focusing on our budgeted funds. We haven't done this exercise in a while, but I thought it might be useful for us to kind of walk through the calculation of how we get to the general fund legal max budget. And we start with the FTE used to calculate the base aid. The fiscal year 18 budget was built on FTE in the amount of 47,687.4. That was 15-16 enrollment. For 19's budget, we're using 16-17's enrollment. That goes down just a little bit to 47,376.5. That's fixed. That number, those numbers will not change. And that's 55% of the budget calculation. So, the other 45% are based on the weightings, and those numbers will vary based on a final year audit count. But right now, we're estimating a slight increase in weightings from 38.7 to 39.6. Those weightings include at-risk, the high-density at-risk, CTE bilingual, transportation, four-year-old at-risk, new facilities weighting, which I think I shared earlier, is going down to, from 510 to about 45, 48. Special education, and then low and high enrollment weighting. So, for fun, the FTE for funding purposes, 86.3, almost 86.4 last year, to 86,000, almost 87,000 this year estimate. Take that in that final column, the 86, 984, times the new base aid amount of 4165. Then, you add back in virtual, because virtual, again, is not a weighting. It's based on an estimated number of students, full-time at 5,000, part-time at 1,700. So, we're at 2,160,000 virtual state aid. Our legal max is then 364, 448, 77, which ties back to our first page, where we talked about the general fund. So, that's how it's calculated. The, again, the highlighted number in red is, will not change. The FTE weightings could change, but based on the best information we have today, we feel the numbers are as solid as we can possibly get them, knowing that when the 9/20 count date occurs, which is such an important date, when 45% of your funding is variable, having those, having that count be solid, having kids in school and be counted is important. This is just a reminder from last time of where we spent dollars related to our fiscal year 19 budget that specifically aligned to our strategic plan. And that was extremely important as we went through this process, and for me, extremely helpful, to have this framework in which to kind of filter requests and look at where we needed to put dollars, to have this framework, to have the themes, to have the goals, really allowed us to say, okay, this is an area pre-K that fits into the strategic plan. Okay, this is what we can do. So, this has been extremely helpful. I think this, as we move forward, we'll refine the process. I think it will serve us well for years to come. So, what happens next in the budget developed timeline? The August 6th date, I think I can still make for the notice to, notice of public hearing, where we'll, you will present, you'll go ahead and give me authority to post the notice. The August 20th adoption as a date, actually, I think ends up being a little tight because of newspaper notifications. So, we'd like to push that out to August 27th. Gives us just a little bit more time to get everything buttoned up, reviewed, you know, tweaks to some of the profile information, so that everything looks, you know, is polished, looks good. And we hit all the newspaper dates with the 10-day notice requirement without pushing that envelope just a little too tightly. So, we're, we could do the 20th if you really want us to, but we'd really, we're asking tonight for the 27th. So, kind of to recap, that this first review of the fiscal year 19 budget reflects a decrease overall in the mill levy rate of .118 mils, with some increased state aid on the supplemental general fund, providing a little bit of property tax relief in that area. Estimated new funds available in general fund and supplemental general total about $18 million, based on estimated FTE counts. The district's counting of students on 9/20 has a direct budget impact, even with part of the formula being based on prior year FTE. And this budget was built around our strategic plan. And at this point, I'm ready for questions.
We do have some. Mike?
I don't know if this is a fair question to ask you or not. If it's not, tell me. We're reducing our LOB, which is great. I think the voters like to see that, especially retired, fixed income-type folks like me. Has property values gone up or down?
They, the last two years, they've been on the uptick. We had a period of time where they were there very flat. We had one negative year. But these last two years, we've been on the uptick, 2.5% last year, around that for this year.
So, we're not losing money by going down?
No.
We're still, and we're still getting what percentage back from the state? We don't get 100% back that we send to them?
As far as, oh, as far as what percentage they're funding? I believe it's 45%.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Ernestine?
Well, that probably answered one of my questions. I have four. But one of my questions was, what was that mill levy?
I'm going to double-check that percentage real quick.
That's fine.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
The mill levy difference, I was going to ask how much money that made, but since it's, the property values have gone up, it's not going to make any difference for us.
We cap out on the LOB at 116, because it's 30% of the general fund. We can't, we can't drive any more dollars than our legal max on that fund.
No, no, I understood. I was wanting to know what the dollar difference was from before.
Oh, the dollars.
But it doesn't matter if it's not going to be a matters to us, because we've got higher property values. It'll make our right money the same. Okay, another, is the latchkey amount for both summer and school year?
Yes.
Okay. And the other was the parents as teachers. I noticed that it's lower this year in the budget. And I also noticed that you've got something called staffing to 1.5, full-time equivalency. And I want to know why that the parents as teachers is going to be less costly this year, because aren't we going to need more?
Parents as teachers is a good example of budget to budget versus budget to actual. Our actual spend in parents as teachers last year, and I'll pull it up, but it was, it was, I don't even think it hit 200,000. I'll double-check that. But we, our actual spend, because we didn't have the teachers hired, because we didn't have a kind of a program that had been really well-vetted at that point, we only spent actual dollars out, a couple hundred thousand dollars. So, we're budgeting, because of some changes that we've made, we're going to budget around the same amount, but this year, we hope to spend that amount, as opposed to last year, where, because of various reasons, we just didn't get there.
Well, I really am with our emphasis on working on at-risk kids. This parents as teachers thing is just, I mean, it's a winner. And it really does help kids succeed in school if they get some, if the parents get some help. I know of several people here in town that, one is herself a doctor, but didn't know anything about how to do the, because she wasn't that kind of a doctor, didn't know anything about the early childhood brain development and that sort of thing. But there's others that we've got, there's tremendous numbers of low-income families that aren't able to access that or have not accessed it, because we just had, just cut back so much.
Right.
So, I want to make sure that we don't cut back on parents as teachers at all.
Right. I can tell you that we have, we have hired, the FTE that we allotted, that we have hired people, they are in place and ready to go for the fall. So, I think you will, we'll see at this point next year that we've spent that budget. In fact, if anything, we may be coming back and needing some additional authority there, so.
That would be fine with me. I would, I would like to see us push to, because that does save for later on, for trying to do rescue things of kids that didn't get a good start. Thank you.
Stan?
Susan, I was wondering if you could clarify something for me. You mentioned in the workshop that we had on the budget that property value increases, we do not benefit as much from that as like the city government, county government does. But then, tonight, you made it sound like, more like that we do benefit from, did I misunderstand?
Well, I mean, when property taxes go up, we're, we collect, we are able to collect additional dollars on the, with whatever the levy is. So, an eight mil on the capital outlay, when property taxes go up, we do capture more in that fund. On the LOB, it doesn't really work that way, because we have a cap. There's, we can't drive any more than $116 million spending authority, because that's our cap. So, the assessed values can go up, but we don't capture any more on that piece. But capital is a good example, where our eight mils, we're assessing eight mils on values that are 2.5% higher, we'll capture that in capital.
Okay. So, it's, it's the LOB that doesn't really benefit
Right.
that much because of our cap.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. Ben?
Susan, could you remind me, what is the special liability fund?
That's related to environmental cleanup at the service center.
Okay. Yep, I'm good.
Okay, is that it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that was good. I have a couple of questions. I know on the board, we've, we've tried, at least as long as I've been on the board, to keep our mill levy as low as possible, as close to normal as possible. Just, can you tell us the last time that we did have to increase the mill? Because I can't remember that.
I can. And the last time, well, that, the last time the mill levy went up was not necessarily because we wanted an increase of some sort, but it was when the state was taking state aid away from capital and away from the LOB. So, we had to increase property tax, or our mill levy
To compensate.
to capture it on the property tax side.
Right.
So, we had been fluctuating 53, up to 57, down to 53, back up to 57, there for a couple years, until that last equity decision, which kind of re-shored up state aid related to those funds, so it's been
But we've stayed fairly consistent over the years.
Yes.
At least the last seven years.
Yes, you could almost, other than those state aid, you could almost draw a line across, because that has been a philosophy for a very long time.
Yeah, and that's good for our community.
And I'll give, when I present next Monday, I'll give a little bit more of a historical look on that particular piece.
Okay. Do you anticipate, because capers went up kind of significantly this year, do you anticipate that that's going to happen again?
There is a 20-year plan related to capers catch-up. So, they will probably build a component in the formula for that piece. In addition to, the employer rate continues to ratchet up as well to fund capers.
So, we're probably going to see
So, yes, maybe not as much as this much, because they have that extra $82 million going in this year. But yes, I anticipate we'll have a ratchet in capers.
Continuing to go up. And truly, that looks like a whole lot of money, but it sits in our account 30 seconds.
Literally 30 seconds.
But the state then gets to say, we're giving you more money, because we're sending you this, and then you give it back to us.
Yes. It's not, it's certainly not money we have to spend on our, on wages or student needs or any of those things. It really is a passer.
And we don't, we don't have it long enough to even draw any interest on it.
No, no. That would be nice, wouldn't it?
Yeah, that would be nice, but we don't. Okay. The August 27th date that you wanted to move from August the 20th, I don't have a problem with that, as long as that meets what the county requires.
We, the due date is August 25th, which is Saturday, so
Monday would be
Fall to the following Monday, and so, we'll give them, we'll probably send it to them Tuesday morning. I don't anticipate any problem with that.
Okay. Do you need for us to vote, or do we just accept that? Do you need a vote on that?
Fall, to the following Monday, and so we'll give them, we'll probably send it to them Tuesday morning. I don't anticipate any problem with that.
Okay. Do you need for us to vote, or do we just accept that? Do you need a vote on that? Okay, thank you. Mike?
The ghost of Lynn Rogers is sticking in my head, and I apologize.
That's bad.
One of the things that we always bring up is, is, and correct me if I'm wrong, the, base state aid is equal to about 2,009, if I'm not mistaken.
As far as where it is now?
Yes.
Right. Our peak was that 4,400 in 2008, 2009, and we've been steadily going down until we kind of bottomed out at 3,852, and now 4,006, 4165, and we're about 3% then for the next few years.
We're still, we're still down, though, a little bit from that.
We're still down a little bit, but we're still nine years behind where we should be.
Yes.
And the LOB, one of the things that I know we've never done, and are we, do we still have the option of taking it to 33 with a vote?
You, you have the option to look at. We would be, we would need to tell the state by April 1st if the board was interested in moving away from the 30% to 31, and then it's subject to protest petition. And so we would have to, you know, publish that that was our intent, and we'd have to wait 40 days to see if a protest was filed.
But as, as ways, the things are going now, we really wouldn't need to do that or even consider doing that. Would that be correct?
It's, it's an option. Certainly, there is, there is funding coming our way related to the, the long-term plan, and we don't know yet what the answer will be on inflation. So those are kind of some, some remaining unknowns that still have to be decided. Will it be, is that enough to do the things the board wants to accomplish with the inflationary factor? Or do we need a little bit more flexibility? I think that's some, for some discussion that we could have.
And bringing up inflation, are trade tariffs going to affect us in our purchasing? And are we, is that even a consideration yet?
I'm going to look back to, the final action on Mr. Mucy's part.
We probably need to spend a little more time looking at that. Certainly, there could be some items that are fuel-based, steel prices, use number N, or we might see some of those affect us a little bit down the line. That would be a good subject that we could do some research on. I'll make sure the staff works with Susan and Dr. Thompson to get a provided update.
Well, that was just something that came into my mind, because of what's going on with the farmers and with the steel and the aluminum, and vehicles are going to start going up.
Possibly, yes, sir.
So, you know, I don't know where else we would get affected by that, but that's still something that would concern us, I guess, in the, maybe not this year, but maybe next year significantly. Thank you for your report. I appreciate what you do for us.
Thank you. The, our spend for parents as teachers last year was $258,000. So our hope is, we spend the full $376,000, since we have the people hired.
Okay, great. Well, we thank you very much, and it is much more fun to have this kind of a budget report than what we've had for a few years.
It is just a little easier, isn't it?
Yes, thank you. And before we move on, I want to do a couple of clarifications, just so that for calendars, because we've adjusted the, when the bond, when the, when we need to vote on the budget, we're going to have August the 20th meeting that's on our calendars moved to the 27th, because it doesn't make any sense for us to have it on the 20th, and when we aren't going to have the reports finished up until the 27th. And that will be a regular meeting on the 27th. And then August the 13th and August the 20th, which are tentatively on our calendars, will both be canceled. So you will, we.
Both be canceled.
Yeah, we will not have an August the 13th, nor an August the 20th meeting, but we will have a regular meeting on the 27th of August.
Okay.
Okay? And if we can, do we need to vote on that, Mike?
You do not, because you've already approved a calendar with those four dates on the calendar. We just didn't know what those meetings were going to be.
Okay. Well, we now know. So we will have a meeting on the 27th instead of the 20th, and the 13th is canceled. Okay?
So it's, oh, go ahead.
Sorry. So it'll be August 6th and August 27th?
That's correct.
That's right.
Yeah. August 6th meeting holds, but.
Thank you.
But we are adjusting, we don't need the 13th. The 20th has now been moved to the 27th. Okay? All right, next item.